All right, it is 5:30. I recall this regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls to order. Our first item on the agenda is to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance stipulated of the United States of America and two republics for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note, all the members of the council are present. We'll move on to the agenda. The first item of business would be to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. We do not have any additions or deletions, but there was an addition to your packet for an item that's already on the agenda, which is the public roadway easement that was provided before the meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we move on to the minutes from December 6th, the regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Second by Councilor Deach. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the public hearing with the Truth in Taxation Meeting of December 6th, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we will move on to the minutes from the December 13th Committee of the Whole meeting. Chair would entertain a motion for those minutes. So moved. We have a motion by Councilor Deach. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the payments of claims. We have transfers from, or I'm sorry, to the 401 permanent improvement of $66,666.66 that's coming evenly between the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33 out of both funds. We have going to reserve for capital outlay, the 403 fund of $25,760.42 that's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $19,136.17 and the 603 sewer in the amount of $6,624.25 for a total transfers of $92,427.8. Moving to the accounts payable, the regular City of International Falls claims of $369,607.42, airport commission claims $121.73, and International Falls Library Board claims of $6,122.88 for a total accounts payable of $382,852.3. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution and pay the claims.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to audience. If there's anyone that has anything to bring up from audience that's not on the agenda. We also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We'll go to old business. We have the resolution approving the final tax levy and the amounts collectible in 2022 and the 2022 budget for the City of International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? I would just like to say that this is the toughest budget that we've ever put together, and it is probably the one that will help us most moving forward into the future. Nobody wanted to do a big tax levy, especially in the middle of a global pandemic. However, last year, we did not levy what we needed to for a permanent improvement, and the reason we didn't is because we were in a global pandemic and we pulled $87,000 out of reserves to get through last year's budget. This is a way to fix a lot of our infrastructure that was not going to be 100% covered under the 1% sales tax. This is going to be maintenance of the projects that we're doing with the 1% sales tax. There's a lot of, there's a lot of forward thought going into these budgets as they're going forward. This is not about fixing the stuff that we're doing next year. This is about maintaining our infrastructure in the future. And it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough deal. However, because we were able to do this this year, I will, I will 100% positively say there will not be a double-digit tax increase next year. We are able to move forward now with what we've done this year, and it should be able to sustain us for the next couple of years, for sure. But it was a tough sell. It was very difficult, and we do know that it is difficult for everyone, including members of this board and the business owners and the residents of International Falls. However, this is what we have to do to make sure that our infrastructure is going to be fixed and be able to be maintained in the future. I do want to thank the council for the long hours that they put into the budget, the staff, and everyone that came and spoke at the Truth in Taxation Meeting, the people that called their counselors, and the people that were open to listening to us as much as we were open to listening to them. So with that being said, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the consent agenda. We have some license renewals that were in your packet. We have liability coverage waiver form not to waive limits on the municipal tour liability and authorized signatures. Approved training for expenses for city council members for the virtual attendance of the League of Minnesota Cities in 2022, Elected Leaders Institute, the foundational or the advanced program for $175 and $95 per person respectively, and approved travel and training for two paramedics and three emergency medical technicians to the 2022 Arrowhead EMS Conference Expo in Duluth, Minnesota, January 21 through 23, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second? Second by Councilor Deach.
Can we correct 2022?
Yes. Yes. Can we just make note that on the consent agenda, the conference must be next year, not in the previous year? With that quick correction, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to our license renewals that include liquor or cigarettes. We have the Elks Club 1599, a club license, restaurant license, and Sunday liquor license. Espresso Lane LLC, DBA The Library, a restaurant license, Sunday liquor license, and an on-sale license, on-sale liquor license. Family Dollar Incorporated, DBA Family Dollar Store 30058, a cigarette license, a 3-2 off-sale license. On the Rocks LLC, a 3-2 off-sale license, an on-sale liquor license, Sunday liquor license, restaurant license, jukebox license, and a pool table license. TRM5 Incorporated, Doing Business as Sammy's Pizza and Restaurant, an on-sale liquor license, a restaurant license, and a Sunday liquor license. TRM2, DBA Chocolate Moose Restaurant Company, a restaurant license, a wine on-sale license, and Voyager Restaurant LLC, a restaurant license and a 3-2 sale restaurant and bar. Chair would entertain a motion to approve all the licenses.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have, and we have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain. The motion carries 4-4. The motion will not abstention. Next, we have the approval of signatures on an updated memorandum of understanding and an agreement between Rainy River Community College and the International Falls Police Department. Brad Crossway, I don't see him online. I don't see him in. Betty, can you just give us a quick overview or, okay, chief, please come on up.
I don't have much on this. It's pretty simple. We are in this MOU already. We're just updating the dates on it. On the face of it, it's just sharing of information we are required statutorily to share anyway. I would just like to note that I had a good discussion with Brad a couple of weeks ago and out of this, and there's some exciting things we'll be doing with the college that goes beyond this MOU. We're just looking, as always, to expand our outreach to people we don't normally have contact with, so, yeah. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. Chair would entertain a motion for the updated MOU.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Second by Councilor Deach. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, Chair. Next, we have easement dedicated for public roadway purposes and right-of-way over and across Lot 13, Block 4, Auditor's Plant Number 33, Coochin County, Minnesota. That, this is the information that was added to your packet before the meeting. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the Christianson family has owned the Riverside Trailer Club for many, many years, and then the process of selling it, during that process, a title examination was done that disclosed that for many, many years, this Lot 13, Block 4, in that plot, has been used as a roadway and been maintained and used for that purpose. But it's titled in the name of the city, and that was holding up the sale of the property and the closing of that sale. And so with this easement, we're officially dedicating that one lot as a roadway for public purposes in perpetuity. And it's, can't tell exactly when that began, but it's clearly over 50 years ago, but it's been used the same way. And I would recommend that this be adopted. It's been done in formula like this for many, many years, but this will make it official.
Does this hurt or hinder the sale of the property? Is this?
It helps. If we didn't do this, the sale could not go through.
Okay.
And the out-of-town purchaser who've done little big projects, and I think they have some very interesting plans to improve the Trailer Club property, and I think it'll be a big benefit to the city.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the easement.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Second by Councilor Deach. Any discussion?
Please. Does that mean that the city will maintain it, or they have maintained it already?
I think that they've already been maintained.
Okay. I just didn't know that we just, that it just gets added to our system that officially.
Yeah. I don't think that's, yeah. I think unofficially it's been done forever. People just assumed that it was a plot of road, but somehow the road got put on this lot rather than a plot of road.
It doesn't need any survey or anything like that?
No.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 4-4 of the motion. 0 against. I have to ask this question because this is important for the sale of the property. How do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Perfect.
I apologize. Thought I got it off.
No problem. I just didn't want to hold up the thing because we had someone that made the second and then did not vote on it. So I just wanted to make sure we were good. All right. Motion passes, 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the application to conduct an off-site gambling for the International Falls Recreation Hockey Association to conduct a raffle at Currie Park Arena on March 20th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the Airport Rescue Grant 3-27-0043-040-2022. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to a resolution approving the transfer of funds from Fund 250 Sales and Use Tax to Fund 350 GO Sales Tax Revenue Bond Series 2020A. Chair would entertain a motion on that one.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. City Administrator, what is that one there?
Yes, Mayor and Council. What this is, is the original way this was set up when the sales tax came into place was the bond fund, which is Fund 350, is where the bond proceeds went into. And that is the fund that has been spending down with the current projects that we've been doing. And you can see it's in the amount of $173,000 is what has been overrun on that account. So therefore, we need to, and it's not technically overrun, but we've just used more, you know, we've completed the bond proceeds plus. So we need to transfer over sales tax to zero that fund out. And then now moving forward, once those bond proceeds were expended, everything will be logged and tracked out of the sales tax fund 250. And that's the way the original resolutions were written in how they need to do the process to proceed through them.
Fantastic. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to a, a one-month extension of the Joint Powers Agreement for the Joint Recreation Commission defining its powers. And then this would run through January 31st, 2022, to allow sufficient time for all parties of the changes need, needed to the existing agreement. Betty, or City Administrator, can you give us some background on this? Because this has been going on for six months, seven months now.
It has. And, you know, Stacy and I have been working on this with the school, and she had put everything together. We had compiled a letter, and we didn't want to just drop that bomb on the Rec Commission, and they met last Wednesday. She had put it in front of me on Monday. I said, we don't have time to do that. Unfortunately, due to the timing of the meetings, we wanted to be able to meet with them, talk with the Rec Commission, you know, and outline to them and tell them exactly what the changes are and what they need to do to be in compliance with a few items. And so therefore, due to the language of, it ended, it technically terminated December 31st, it does not have a clause in there that says that it technically will run until renewed. It's best that we renew it for one more month, allow the time for us to meet with the Rec Commission, meet with the city, meet with the school, and go over those bulleted items that we have prepared. It just needed a little more time.
So is that something that staff is going to do and go to the Rec Commission? Are they going to be calling a special meeting? I mean, what is the?
Stacy is going to be working with Kevin at the school to meet, and myself, and meet with Bill and the representatives of the Rec Commission. And then I will be bringing it along with Stacy to the Committee of the Whole, of the city, to understand what those, you know, it's the regulations that need to be followed. It's nothing drastic or, you know, any way negative. It's just there's rules that are needed to be implemented and followed.
Okay. All right. So the Chair would entertain a motion to extend the document till January 31st, 2022. So moved. We have a motion by Councilor Deach. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, please. And in the, in the Rec Commission meeting, we did discuss it, and we do know that we have a retirement coming up. We do know that, that Bill Mason will be retiring here soon as the Recreation Director, and we know that he splits time as Recreation Director and the Athletic Director. So he works as Rec, in both capacities. And the Rec Commission has recognized that with changes, this, this joint powers agreement is a unicorn. These, these don't exist in, in the state of Minnesota or anywhere else. So, and we recognize that. And we recognize that change may be coming. So we know that we will be, when we do sign the, the final joint powers agreement, we do recognize that it will probably be a short-term agreement, if a year, maybe two years tops, knowing that with his retirement, we don't know what it's going to look like, what that alignment will look like as far as what the school decides to do with the Athletic Director, what they, what we decide to do with the Recreation Director. So the, the Rec Commission is already kind of aware that change is potentially coming. Again, there's no, you know, there's nothing definitive. We don't know what it's going to look like. But we do know that there is potential change because Bill has really kind of held it all together. But we don't, nobody knows. So, and-
The biggest thing will be the school. They, you know, they're going to have to come up with an athletic director. Right now, he's doing both jobs. So that will be the big change. I mean, to make a decision how they're going to go about that. But yeah, it looks like April of 2023, yeah, is when he's going to retire.
So we've got less than a year and a half. We've got just a little over a year.
Two weeks' notice.
Right. But, you know, these, these agreements between cities and school districts just don't, they just don't exist. They've pretty much all gone away. So, and we recognize that. And we recognize that as a commission. So we, we know that change may, may be coming. So we're just, we're preparing for that. So.
So since, since we're having this kind of a little bit of a rabbit hole conversation based off of, you know, specifically this, what is it that the city gives to the Rec Commission every year? Is it $83,000 or $85,000 this year is what, what our portion is, and then the school district to come up with their portion, it ends up being their, they have monies that comes out of the, I don't even know, it's per student from the school. He's pulling up the number.
The calculation that is prepared that is how they come up with what the fee.
Yeah. So the school, the school district through their enrollment puts in roughly $75,000 to $85,000, and then we put in $80,000 to $85,000 every year for the budget. And so that would be, depending on how things move forward, that's why it's really nice for the school district right now because they can pay into the, the Rec Commission to offset those costs. And Councilor Kraus is, is 100% right. Nobody does this. This is very, very unique to what our community has done, and we've done it for a very long time, which Mike has all of the history on this.
I'm sorry.
I'm not asking you to tell it, but-
So you don't want me to?
No, no, I've heard it before. But, but yeah, it's, it's something that we definitely have to look at as, you know, we move forward in recreation and such. So thank you for Stacy at the school and, and our City Administrator for bringing this forward so that we can plan for the future. All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to Committee of the Whole Recommendations. Recommend not replacing the stop signs at going north and south at the intersections of Fourth Avenue and Seventh Street. They were taken, they were removed due to the placement of the detour route for the Highway 53 rehabilitation. Chair would entertain a motion to not replace those stop signs.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Yes. I guess I would like to ask the chief what his thoughts are on this.
I think anytime you remove rest stop signs, there's going to be people that use them. I don't think you've had time to really study whether or not that's going to increase, obviously increase traffic or, you know, accidents or whatnot. But honestly, I think anything else, I think we could all take a little bit of work regarding, especially in winter. There are stop signs in most of those places anyway. It's just pretty straight way down there. Most of the streets have stop signs anywhere here.
They all do. They all do. They all have stoplight stop signs.
I think so far.
That's where the detour was, and that was, didn't have any issues of that.
Yeah. I don't think we have-
The cross-traffic stops.
...access there.
Okay. Well, and, and just to add this little piece of it, the reason that it came up in Public Works and, and the recommendation to come here, and we had it through the Committee of the Whole, is we haven't done a really good job about keeping track of when and why we, we remove things or we add stop signs. And it is the, I think this is the one that specifically prompted the conversation, that the reason the stop sign was there is because there was a family who had a child with a deaf, a deaf child on that intersection. So we put in the stop sign there, stop signs there, so traffic would slow down because the child couldn't hear. They have since moved from that area, but the stop sign stayed. So that's, so it wasn't due to flow or anything like that. It was due to a very specific circumstance that, that that was there. So. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have moving forward with the process of annexing the International Falls Coochin County Airport property into the city limits of International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? City Administrator, what would be the process that we go through moving forward? Or the City Attorney, what would be the process that we move forward to here?
Well, if you and the county are in agreement, there's a relatively straightforward process like we did with the other city properties that were contiguous. I guess that's, would be the issue. And I don't know off the top of my head whether or not the airport is contiguous.
Half the airport is in the city.
Yeah, we own the property. So.
Yeah. Half the city is, half the airport property is in the city, and half the airport property is not in the city. So it definitely is contiguous.
Yeah. So the process would be for the city and the county to basically petition the state for that to occur and provide the appropriate information. And it shouldn't be a complicated process if the county agrees.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. We'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, consider purchasing a Flow MSP, pre-incident fire planning software for the Fire Department. Chief Nasa.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the information was included in your packet. We got reached out to by this vendor, Flow MSP. And I've been talking to him for a couple of years now, and quite frankly, I, I bit here about a month ago, and I had him do a demo for us, and I was very impressed with the software and what it provided us. So if you guys remember, about a year ago, we went- So if you guys remember about a year ago, we went through a ISO evaluation. That happens about every 10 years. And we dropped our ISO number from a five to a four and that's a pretty big deal. One of the deficiencies that we get knocked down for every year on our ISO is our pre-planning and our data and our filing of those pre-plans. So one thing that this software does is that, well, they pretty much guarantee that you stay or improve your ISO score due to the filing system and everything that goes along with that. The one thing that I really liked about this is it was very user-friendly. So it's a cloud-driven software system, so it can be used on any smartphone, iPad, anything like that. And it's available to all our department members. So the old way of doing pre-plans was literally printed out papers in a three-ring binder in the truck and people flipping through the three-ring binder to find the pre-plans on buildings. This way, it's just like everything else now is transitioned with a smartphone or software. And any one of our members can pull up those pre-plans on their smartphone when they're on the scene and see what they need to deal with. The thing that was nice about it is in the demo, the, the gentleman who's sitting, I believe they're in Illinois, he was sitting at his desk in Illinois and pre-planned a building for us in about four minutes in International Falls from Illinois. So he did a really good job just using map data and everything else to pre-plan the building. So there are situations where, of course, we could go out and visit onsite and take onsite pictures and everything else, but there's also the Google mapping software and all that other kind of good stuff that inclement weather or whatever, you can have somebody sitting at a desk doing pre-plans. So I just found it very valuable. The one recommendation I would make is they're pretty price efficient, I think, about 50, well, it is $1,500 for a one-year license and they do offer multi-year discounts. At this time, I would recommend just doing a one-year contract and make sure it works out for us and works the way we want it. And then if we want to explore it further next year and do a multi-year contract and get some savings, go, go that route. So my recommendation is for a one-year, $1,500.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the Fire Chief?
Is this going to require a lot of data entry time?
No, not a ton. But it is something that, again, I mean, we, we can go out in the field, myself or the Fire Marshal can go out in the field. And there are certain buildings that the engineers work in a night shift. If they're slow with ambulance runs or whatnot, they can be at the computer doing pre-plans as well. So I think it's a, I think it's a very usable platform for that reason.
Okay. Chief, I have one que, well, I, I already know the answer, but I would really like you to explain why our ISO is important. If we're going to spend $1,500 a year to try to maintain our ISO score or to lower our ISO score, why is that important for the residents of International Falls and why is $1,500 a good investment on that?
Well, I'll answer that the best way I can. So ISO is the insurance services office and they're an independent business, I guess is the right word. And they go through and they rate a bit, they rate a city on their fire safety capability. So they go through everything with the Fire Department related, so staffing, trucks, water service, everything that goes along with running a fire department. They determine the safety that's built into that department, how good the department is. Dependent on the insurance, independent insurance companies, use State Farm, American Family, whatever as an example, they'll use those ratings from the ISO to help determine a price on insurance for your home. Residents do save on ISO rating dependent on the company, but really the big one is commercial businesses that save on that. But residents do see value as well depending on their insurance carrier.
So if we spend $1,500 a year, which is, let's say is roughly $150 a month, just guessed, or just rough estimating it, that could be saving by keeping our ISO low, could be saving our businesses' major properties in town very good money on their insurance throughout the course of the year?
Yes, and I, I don't want to share the business name here, but I did inform somebody on this a while back. We had a conversation about it and he called his insurance company. He had a commercial building and he didn't save a ton of money, but he did save premiums over the year. And I don't, I, I can't even off of memory quote the, what it was, but he, I think that one individual property saved, and he goes maybe a couple hundred dollars a year, but you factor that over-
Multiple businesses.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and that, there were a couple of other things to, to ask you about the ISO rating as we're discussing it. So what are some of the things that keep our ISO where we're at right now? Part of it is that we have an engineer on staff, correct? What, what are, what gets us to where we're at right now?
There's, there's a lot of things. We have a very good water delivery service, that's huge. Our maintenance schedule and our equipment, so we have very good fire trucks. We have them pump-tested annually. They meet, they meet the service requirement for the ISO. We have good gear, that's part of it. Staffing and call-outs, so Coochin County, when they added CAD dispatching, helped us out. There's 10, 10 sections in the ISO and I, off of, sorry, you put me on the spot, I can't-
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But staffing is a big part of it. Pre-plans is a big part of it. Showing your water data is a big part of it. And then your maintenance and equipment is another huge part of it. So there's 10 sections that go into that. Fire prevention and community risk reduction is a section in there. So again, what we did with the Fire Marshal, that was a big deal on the ISO side. So we're doing, along with pre-planning, we're doing rental licensing and inspections of buildings that way too, so that helps as well.
And one last thing, because rural fire actually contracts with the city of International Falls and our ISO rating actually is helping people outside of the city of International Falls because it's our fire service that, that does the delivery, but it's not as good because it's not timed, correct?
That's a yes and no answer. So it's all dependent on how close to the water system you are. So in a rural area, they have a different designator. We have the best designator we can have for outside of municipal water supply.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. We, we don't get a chance to talk about all the things that we're doing that actually helps the, the area funding and, and dollar-wise, because we see a lot of money that gets spent in the Fire Department. But with that being said, there's discounts that people are able to incur because of those. So we have, we don't have a motion in a second. Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with the one-year recommendation, is that what you said?
Yes, please.
So we have a, Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with a one-year subscription at $1,500.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the hiring of paid on-call firefighters. Chief Manasa.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So our International Falls Fire Department is a civil service-based department, meaning we follow the rules and regulations of a civil service. In those rules and regulations, we have a maximum number of firefighters and a minimum number of firefighters. This happens every couple of years, but we have reached our minimum number. So we asked for a testing process from the civil service. They approved it and I believe it was brought to either an HR or Committee of the Whole and were approved to go forward with that testing process. We did conduct those tests. We had an eligibility roster done up from that testing. We had five very good applicants and the, the Commission approved the placement of those candidates. And I would like to second that, that I think all five candidates are, are good. And I would request that applicants listed be appointed to the Fire Department effective January 1st, contingent on background checks.
Okay, you heard the Fire Marshal, or the Fire Chief. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the hiring based off of background checks and any other pre-employment paperwork. So moved. We have a motion by Counselor Deitch, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question. Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we will go to approve the 2022 regular city council meeting schedule along with the Committee of the Whole schedule. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those schedules.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Any discussion? Mike, did you, Counselor Holden, did you notice that there was a meeting in November?
I'll just have to miss that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you saw it, that's all. Because you did make the motion.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Call the question. Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to a memo for the committee meeting schedules. One thing I do, I want to point out, it was not a glaring mistake. We did take HR committee off of this because now we have an HR person that is doing that work and everything then can come to the Committee of the Whole. So anything that still has to run past the city council, it still has to run past the members, but since we do have one person that is working with the city administrator, that we did take HR off because we have someone whose department that is. However, it'll still go through the Committee of the Whole before it goes to council. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the committee meeting schedules.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of the administrator.
Mayor and Council, I have nothing specific. I just want to thank everybody for our last, since this is our last council meeting, for everything this past year, the employees, the staff, the, the great work that they do and working with you all as well, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. City Attorney. Mayor and Council, been very busy in a couple of years. One, last week on Thursday, we actually had, we had a court day, we had 70 criminal cases on behalf of the city in one day, which is a new record by about 20 cases in the day. And apart from that, looking on blight issues with the Fire Marshal, and working through some issues, trying to resolve some things with some of the major commercial businesses that have, that have been a problem. And then busy negotiating with the three different unions, making some progress there and, and we have more meetings scheduled. That's, hopefully we're still going to be able to get something done to recommend to the council before the end of the year, but it looks like, as often happens, we may start the new year without those contracts in place.
I would assume we won't have a contract in place. This is our last meeting of the year.
Not without a special meeting. I have, I have nothing further.
Okay. Any, any questions for the city attorney or city administrator? All right, any department heads have anything to bring forward? In your packet, you have the monthly police report for November, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward? Okay, I have one thing really quick for, and it is a weird one. So on Sunday, I believe it was yesterday, I was doing some deliveries for the store and I saw there was a whole, there was a fire truck and there were people standing out in a yard. And I'm like, oh my gosh, this is horrible, whatever's going on. And I just passed by and I didn't think anything of it. There were kids sitting outside this house and I was so, I was concerned, but I also know that it's not my place and I just kept going and I didn't really worry about it too terribly much. I continued doing my delivery. I came back to the restaurant and on the way back, I just wanted to see if everything had been taken care of. So I went down the same road, nice and slow, and I happened to look and now Santa Claus is outside that house. And I was getting really kind of weirded out and I had to call the Fire Chief. And I called the Fire Chief, I said, hey, what is happening right now at 13th Avenue? And, and he goes, I, I don't know why. And I said, well, there's a fire truck there and Santa Claus is outside. And he goes, oh, that's the greatest Christmas ever. The Fire Department has been asked if we could bring a fire truck. And then later in the evening, I was able to see, our Police Department was also at that. And I think it's a wonderful thing that our city services have been able to do along with the committee that puts that together in our community. I think it's, it's great to be present for, for such things. So I want to thank both the Police Department, the Fire Department and anybody else that had a, a role to play in that because I was not part of that, which is okay by me. I'm really happy that the city had some piece of that. So thank you to both of you gentlemen and to your departments for being part of that.
Amy Vassaraba is the Chair.
Okay, thank you. And definitely thank, and I real-
Best Christmas ever.
Best Christmas ever. Okay, so I just want to thank everyone who put that together in our community because it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And secondly, we did, we did have a EDA meeting this afternoon. And at that EDA meeting, the EDA was able to give a $40,000 loan to the Coochin County Museum. $20,000 of that will be forgiven if it's paid back in five years. That is to help them with the roof that's coming out of the EDA fund, which is basically funded by the Voyager's National Park lease. There's some additional funds in there for things like that. We were also able to use those funds to help facilitate a expansion of green tech. So we're trying to utilize those funds in the way that they are meant to be used to help businesses grow in our community, help tourism. So that is some of how those funds have been used. Besides that, I have nothing else. We will go to audiences. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? Hearing none, our next meeting will be in the new year. Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence. You have your public library meeting information, Recreation Commission meeting and the Airport Commission meeting. Minutes are all in your packet. This is just one really quick reminder that is not on here. Our next meeting is January 3rd. There will be appointments that are for various boards and commissions in our area. There are some people that have let me know that they do not want to serve. There are other ones that do want to serve on boards and commissions, everything from planning and zoning, the Airport Commission, North Cooch Sanitary District. There are lots of boards and commissions that our community has to offer. If you would like to be selected for any of those, please contact me directly. You can email me through the city or just call the city's offices and let them know. There are forms you could fill out. You don't have to fill them out, but we do want everyone to know that there are boards and commissions. If you want to be part of what we're doing as a community, we would love to have your input. So those will be appointed at January 3rd. So there is about two weeks for people to get, get ahold of me if you want to be on some boards and commissions in the city. With that being said, our next regular city council meeting is January 3rd. We will be closed for the Christmas holiday on, at noon on December 23rd and we will be closed all day Friday, December 24th. With that being said, Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you guys for a great year. We did, we did a lot of stuff. We didn't finish everything that we wanted to do this year, but we did get a lot of stuff done. And I think honestly, we got more done this year than we did in the last six or seven. So I greatly appreciate everyone's time and concern. And I, I want to give a special thank you to our city administrator to come on in the beginning of this year, or middle of this year, and from day one, getting more and more stuff thrown on your plate. And to be completely honest, if we wouldn't have gotten an HR director, I don't think we'd have a, a city administrator right now. So with that being said, I, I want to truly say thank you to our city administrator. It's been- It's been not her first full year, but, uh, it's been a very good first year. So, thank you and with that being said, this meeting is adjourned.